Good evening everyone and welcome to City Council and happy new year to you all. Let's hope it was worth waiting for. Roger, could you lead us off please?
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council which is being held in a hybrid format in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being livestreamed. By participating in the meeting, you are consenting to being filmed and recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? If you are to be the next speaker, please allow a pause after the last speaker has muted their microphone. Please then press the right-hand button on your console to activate your microphone. If you are joining the meeting remotely, please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you're speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, then you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite me to speak. Please do not use the hands-up function or intervene in any other way. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the provisions of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the usual way. Does any member have any queries regarding these procedures? There are no queries Deputy Lord Provost, so I'll now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, I'll now take a roll call for the minutes and I would ask if members would confirm their presence when they call their names. Chris La Flynn.
Present.
Chris Anderson.
Present.
Chris Black.
Present.
I've received apologies from Lord Provost Campbell, Deputy Lord Provost Corden.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Chris O'Nakle.
There should be apologies for Chris O'Nakle as well.
Thank you. Chris Hunter.
Good evening, I'm here.
Chris Lynn.
Present.
Chris Mills.
Aye, present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Chris Roan.
Good evening, present.
And I've received apologies from Bailey Swars. Chris Short.
I'm here.
Chris Smith.
I'm here.
Chris Tolland.
I am here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
I've received apologies from Council Crockshank. Council Finnigan.
Happy New Year, I'm here.
Chris McHugh.
Present.
Chris McCurran.
Present.
Chris Scullen.
Hi, present.
You're thank you. I've received apologies from Council Shears. Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McKerson.
Good evening, present.
Chris Coleman.
Good evening.
Chris Creighton.
I'm here.
Chris Duncan.
Here.
And Bailey Scott.
Here.
That concludes the roll call.
Thank you Willie. Back to you please Roger.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Deputy Lord Provost, members of the council. Item two is the minutes for information and record purposes.
If there are no questions, are these agreed? Thank you. Roger please.
Item three, appointment to membership of standing committees and outside bodies. A, Dundee Educational Trust. It is reported that Council Smith has intimated her resignation as a member of the above outside body and the council's instructions are requested in relation to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you. Bailey Dawson.
Council Mills please Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you. Roger please.
B, Cozla Community and Wellbeing Board. It is reported that Council Flynn has intimated his resignation as a member of the above outside body. The council's instructions are requested in relation to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you. Bailey Dawson.
Be yourself Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you. So with that, I believe that is the business. Thank you very much.
Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome to the first meeting of the Climate, Environment and Biodiversity Committee. I'd like Veronica to start us off by taking us through the agenda.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, are there any declarations?
I see no declaration open. Bailey Dawson, item three, is that for this committee?
Oh sorry, that was the previous.
Previous one. So I see no declarations of interest, thank you. Next item.
A request has been made for a deputation in respect of item two. Do you agree to hear the deputation?
The committee agree to hear the deputation. I'm very pleased to welcome the deputation. This work's been initiated by Global Justice Now. I believe we have four people coming to the podium and two are going to make the deputation. I think it's Mike and Sandy who are coming. Is that correct Mr Wardle?
Yes indeed it is.
If they can make their way to the podium here. And I see you have some colleagues up in the balcony, so welcome to you as well. So my understanding of the procedure is that you have seven minutes to make your deputation and I think two of you are going to share the presentation. So after the presentation, you can open it to questions and you could answer the questions for them.
Introduce myself, I'm Mike Bailey from Global Justice Dundee. And Sandy Winterbaum will be talking after me on behalf of North Sea Knitters. And we've also got Sally Romilly and Andrew Lanwarne. Andrew's representing Friends of the Earth Dundee as well, okay. As I've said, we're confident that tonight you will endorse our call for a fossil fuel non-proliferation treaty. We need to accelerate a just transition and local councils are an essential element in making this happen. Citizens, businesses, public services and others in every local authority area are responsible for the consumption of energy and emissions of greenhouse gases globally. In Scotland, we're facing worse flooding, coastal changes, heatwaves and more extreme weather, all of which will have an impact on your council budgets. And globally, we know that people are facing far worse in terms of climate impacts, particularly in low-income countries. But local authorities are also at the vanguard of climate solutions, stopping fossil fuel projects, developing sustainable energy alternatives, retrofitting buildings and dropping fossil fuel financing. Cities are on the front line of the climate crisis, facing natural disasters that are fundamentally reshaping our urban communities. The treaty's aims and objectives will be closely aligned with existing council policies and strategies. I'm sure the officers in Dundee have already engaged with their peers in Edinburgh and Glasgow who have already endorsed the treaty with regards to resource impacts and can confirm that this brings no additional burdens on council resources and has no reporting requirements. We firmly believe that there are no direct financial implications arising from this motion. No new legal issues, no personnel issues, no new procurement issues. It aligns perfectly with this council's strategic plan to fight the climate emergency and adjust transition to a net zero. The treaty initiative aims to ensure that no worker, community or country is left behind. The proposal supports this council's Current Equalities Outcome Action Plan 2021 to 2025. And the adoption of the treaty has the potential to have a positive impact on vulnerable groups providing routes to alleviate fuel poverty. The treaty underpins the broad aims of Dundee Climate Action Plan and the overall ambition to achieve net zero by 2045. Finally, I ask you good councillors of this fine city to please endorse the fossil fuel proliferation and now pass over to Sandy.
Excuse me, this is...
This is my guy. Excuse me, we're hearing a deputation. Could you please resist it? Could you please allow the deputation to proceed? Mr Wardle, is there any way of closing down?
I'll start this. I'll start this by... Thank you. Why are you supporting that? They mock us people in Dundee! Stop it! We're in Dundee! Keep going on then!
Please continue.
Thank you.
Sandy.
So I'll start this by saying that I have lectured and researched in the earth and environmental sciences for over thirty years. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the North Sea Knitters who have been campaigning with Global Justice Now on the fossil fuel treaty in Scotland. Knitting represents the skills, knowledge and love handed down through the generations to those that come after us. But what we most want to pass on to our children and our grandchildren is a livable and hospitable climate that will allow them to thrive without the fear, uncertainty and costs that an increasingly hostile planet will bring. Our red line scarves represent the one and a half degrees of global warming as enshrined in the Paris Agreement which our UK government ratified. Crossing this line places us in unknown and dangerous territory where the potential of triggering catastrophic climate breakdown becomes a very stark reality. At present, we are set to hit an unimaginable two and a half to three degrees of warming by the end of this century. That is a terrifying future that we are forcing on our young people to face. It's no wonder that over two-thirds of them are now struggling with eco-anxiety. The Fossil Fuel Non-Proliferation Treaty is a bold proposal calling for an end to fossil fuel expansion and a workable plan to ensure a fast, fair and properly financed global transition to clean, affordable energy for all that leaves no worker, no community or no country behind. It is being led by seven Pacific island nation-states have been hit first and worst by climate change. The UK's towns and cities can and must play a key role in driving the clean energy transition which presents economic opportunities that far outweigh the benefits of expanding fossil fuel use and extraction. Dundee has an opportunity to show real leadership and join with other UK cities including Edinburgh, Glasgow, London, Birmingham, Brighton and Reading representing almost twelve million people across the UK. Dundee with its history of innovation and adaptation in industry and its courage in the face of exploration and change has an opportunity to be at the leading edge of this critical transition. The fact that Dundee's docks are often full of new wind turbines is testament to that. We stand at a point in time where our actions today will shape the future for all generations that come after us. We want our legacy to be a good one. We might have already passed one and a half degrees of warming, but every point one of a degree is worth fighting for. Every point one of a degree represents lives saved. Councillors, this is your chance to join the global clarion call for action and to give hope to the young folk of this city. Please back this vital treaty. Thank you.
Thank you very much Sandy and Mike for your presentation. I'm sorry for the interruption you kept to time which was very good of you. I'd just like to open this up to questions from the councillors here. So if anybody would like to say in the chat if they have a question that they'd like to see clarification on. And I've got Bailey Scott.
Thank you for your deputation and you're right, the council does need to show leadership on climate change. But referring to some of the points that were made from the gallery there, I just wondered what your position is in respect of, for instance, China who are the biggest polluters of the environment generating something like fourteen billion tonnes of CO2 every year and the UK is only responsible for one percent of CO2 emissions each year. I just wonder how we make countries like China be responsible for their emissions as well and for instance in America where the new administration is talking about drill, drill, drilling. How do we overcome the difficulties that are happening in other countries?
Good evening everyone. I represent the Greenpeace, Tayside and Dundee local group. In response to your question, I think we have to lead by example which is one point. Also, I think we need to take account of the historical emissions that we as one of the richest countries of the world have made the biggest contribution to greenhouse gas emissions over the centuries. And therefore, we need to take responsibility for supporting countries in the so-called developing world to adopt renewable technologies. And in the case of China, they are ramping forward with wind power, with solar. And I think we need to encourage those countries to do that while bearing in mind how we have benefited here in Dundee, how a lot of the wealth has come from the other countries in the world. And sometimes that wealth hasn't included the carbon emissions. I think if you take the amount of carbon emissions that we are responsible for in the UK, if you consider colonialism and all the resources and the forests and minerals etcetera that we have used from other countries, then it actually triples the amount that we are contributing to global emissions. Does that answer your question?
Thank you Sally. Are you happy with that response Bailey Scott? I've now got a question from Council Tolland. Thank you. Could you hear me? Okay. I'm gonna go a little bit local now. If you were to give us, the local council, some advice, what would be the one thing you would want the council to do in order to implement this treaty?
Good evening. I'm Andrew Lanwarne from Friends of the Earth Tayside. The treaty is a treaty between nations potentially and Colombia's signed up to it. A range of island states are leading the way on it because their existence is threatened by climate change. What they're trying to do is build up more and more support for the treaty. Now it's important that cities like Dundee and Glasgow and Edinburgh and cities and other local authorities are championing the battle against climate change to mitigate climate change and to adapt to climate change at the local level and to educate their constituencies, their local populations in the impact they're having on climate change. And by this kind of support that Dundee City Council has shown over recent years since it declared a climate emergency in 2019, you're demonstrating your concern for this, you're demonstrating through the Climate Fund the importance of action in local communities. I think these are the kind of steps that are very important. You're also, I know in this meeting this evening, you're looking at your own impact on climate change and how you measure the move towards net zero. This action has to be taken at the local level, but what we're trying to do, what Global Justice Now is one of dozens of organisations campaigning for this fossil fuel treaty are trying to do is build up the grassroots opinion and the strength of opinion to confront the Trump administration, the Chinese and the UK government and say we need to move more quickly in phasing out fossil fuels. This is being obstructed through the COP negotiations by the fossil fuel lobby. The Fossil Fuel Treaty is a way of working around that so that countries and local governments and regions can all work towards mitigating climate change and their impacts on climate change and phasing out fossil fuels as quickly as possible.
Council Tolland, are you happy with that response? I'm sorry, yeah that'll do, thank you. I have a question from Council Black.
We have thousands of council houses. In those council houses, we have thousands of gas boilers and we have tenants who live on very low incomes. And we could go and borrow a lot of money and we could put in heat pumps and renewables of all kinds, we could insulate more as well. And we'd have to put the rents up to pay for that unless we can find money from some other source. And so we would be asking our tenants to pay potentially much higher rents and also potentially higher fuel bills. But that's what we'd like to do, not the higher fuel bills part or the higher rents, but we would like to get to that position where the heating systems in the homes that we provide were renewable and were emission free. How can you help us get there?
We would like to answer that Andy.
I think this is the tricky one for, in relation to this treaty specifically. The treaty is intended to have within it a framework for the just transition away from dependence on fossil fuels. And it should take account of how governments fund and manage the support for those who are less able to pay for these kind of improvements, the accommodation. This has to be worked out, I'm afraid. It's not, there's no blueprint for this treaty which sets out how this is going to be achieved. There's going to have to be negotiations with Scottish government, by the local authorities and housing associations and so on and financial institutions to work out a way of providing this support. And also with the private sector who would install this equipment. But we do have some difficult choices and difficult challenges to face in making this transition. The treaty is a step towards moving in that direction and working out how we can do it most effectively rather than some places, some political parties trying to play a game around it. We have to work together, we're all in this and we've got to work to helping the poorest through it along with everyone else.
Thank you.
I don't think money spent on insulating people's homes is ever going to be wasted. I think that the more we reduce energy demand, the better. And I think that's got to be done at a local level. But also if we move away from fossil fuels, it means that we're not reliant on global energy markets. Most of our gas comes from Qatar, so they can do what they like with their energy prices. So the people in fuel poverty are going to be kept in fuel poverty at the behest of people who are in charge of global fossil fuel prices.
Thank you for that.
Not got my speaker on. You want me to repeat it? Yeah, so thank you very, very much. It's much appreciated. So we have basically, in the council, I worked collaboratively with the SNP, the Labour Party, the Liberal Democrats and Bailey Scott from the Conservatives to draft a motion which we will be sharing with you now. So it's got cross-party support in the drafting. It's basically, I don't know if you're willing, can share that on the screen Mr Wardle? I might as well to read it out for the people who are here. It's not very long. I'll do that. So the motion basically says Dundee is formally recognised by the Carbon Disclosure Project of one of a hundred and nineteen cities across the world exercising bold leadership and transparency in tackling climate change. With the support of the Dundee Climate Leadership Group, Dundee City Council was also one of the first local authorities in Scotland to submit a local area energy plan to the Scottish government outlining the city's pathway to transition from fossil fuel dependency to a decarbonised energy source by 2045. Dundee City Council fully recognises the demand for fossil fuel energies, that the demand for fossil fuel energy sources must reduce and that there must be a just transition to renewable decarbonised energy production. At present, the vast majority of the city's domestic and non-domestic properties rely on natural gas as their primary energy source. The transition from fossil fuel will require energy efficiency interventions in most of these properties over the coming decades. But this investment will improve living standards, reduce fuel poverty, increase our resilience to more extreme climate events and create employment in the city for decades to come. Dundee City Council therefore welcomes the work Global Justice Now is undertaking in campaigning for a fossil fuel non-proliferation treaty and endorse the campaign. We asked the convener of the Climate, Environment and Biodiversity Committee to bring the campaign to the attention of the Convention of Scottish Local Authorities and we also asked the convener to write to the First Minister, John Swinney, in his capacity as one of the five co-chairs of the Under-Two Coalition, to continue to maintain the pressure to deliver a decarbonised decarbonisation pathway both nationally and globally. So that's the motion that was agreed by all the four parties. Um I just wanted to say a little bit here as the proposer that we were very keen to write to the Convention of Scottish Local Authorities because that brings your campaign to the attention of all thirty two local authorities. COSLA is co-founding a climate intelligence service to share this information across all local authorities. And it has an Environment and Economy Board, so we thought that was a useful place to write to. Um we also wanted to write to John Swinney because he is one of the co-chairs of the Under Two Coalition. Um for people who are unaware of the Under Two Coalition, it comprises a hundred and seventy eight individual states, regions and provinces and sub-national governments across Africa, the Asia-Pacific, Europe, South America and North America. And those regions and states basically control fifty percent of global GDP. So the Under Two Coalition is basically saying we have to work um not just at a national level, we have to work at a sub-national level. Scotland is a sub-national state and we're one of the co-chairs. And so we thought it would be extremely useful um to bring this campaign to his attention. And the co, the Under Two Coalition recently did an assessment of the COP twenty nine summit in Baku. And it stated that the future is local. So to answer some of the questions raised earlier, um they were basically saying that whilst national governments may prevaricate, sub-national governments like Scotland show show up and shout and we're the people who make the difference. And they reported that over ten thousand five hundred cities in the world and across fifty regions representing two billion people are taking direct action. So that's the role that Dundee has to play in making sure that we're saying we we have to implement, we have to convert this from a target to doing something on the ground. So we have to show leadership. So I'd like to propose the motion. Um I'd like to invite Bailey Keenan, who I believe is joining us online, to second the motion.
Thanks, convener. Uh more than more than happy to second the motion. Um I think we as a council are doing considerable amounts to to overcome the need for fossil fuels to be used. And we've got ambitions as a council. The the real issue that we need is that just transition and additional funding to make some of these things happen, such as district heating systems, uh extra insulation in homes and reducing the need for fossil fuels to be used. I think that big governments need to look at that just transition and see the workforce moving from fossil fuels to renewable energies. You know, we've got considerable amount of wave energy now that's been generated. But I don't think we've been very good at capturing jobs and manufacturing. Uh and that needs to come to Britain uh and the and indeed into Scotland so that that people will see that just just transition away from fossil fuels and see that there's a future life for them and their families funded through through work. Uh but just working in a different industry perhaps, you know, very similar jobs to what we're doing at the moment uh in uh uh in the fossil fuel or oil industry but uh remove moving over to renewables. I think that we have a plan, uh which certainly need to have some funds uh moving towards that. But at this stage, more than happy to to support uh this motion going forward and make the call uh for that just transition for people to sign up to the fossil fuel proliferation treaty. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bailey Keenan. Much appreciated. Mr Waddell, can I ask you to remove the motion from the screen so that we could see the people who are speaking? And I was just going to um bring in Bailey McPherson, um who was also part of drafting this motion.
Uh thanks very much, uh convener. First of all, a very happy New Year uh to everybody. Um our group is pleased to support this motion. And I I I felt that you, I and Bailey Keenan had a very useful and productive meeting discussing that. And I think with all credit, uh you, uh convener, put in hard graft of actually, the spade work of actually pulling the final version together and I'm most grateful for that. I would also say that uh despite the challenges, that that was a very well-delivered uh deputation. So many, many thanks to Mike and Sandy uh and her two colleagues uh for their uh deputation um and answering her questions this evening. I think we can say, I I I certainly hope we can say that we can have unanimous and cross-party support for the principles of this um uh motion before us tonight in relation to supporting a fossil fuel non-proliferation treaty. So I'm grateful for the cross-party working that has achieved that. And thank you very much, convener.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. And to bring in the full pa, the full suite, can I bring in Bailey Scott? Thank you.
Thank you, convener. And I'm sorry I wasn't able to join your meeting when you got together with the 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 other party leaders. Uh but thank you for consulting me afterwards and allowing me to contribute towards it. Um when I first saw um your your proposals and um the the campaign's um initiative uh for a just energy transition, I initially thought it was in respect of the impact global warnings had on the 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 smaller island nations and the developing countries. So I was pleased to hear tonight from the deputation that no worker, community or country will be left behind. That is quite important locally. When in the North East we have so many workers engaged in the industry, eh eh energy industry. And um so it's important that the transition we do is fair to everybody. Uh and uh when your partners, previously partners in government, the Greens uh announced, um I don't think it was last year, it might have been the year before, that gas boilers needed to be replaced by heat pumps uh in a very short time scale, I was inundated with comments from local residents about the cost that would involve in doing that and was it really going to happen? So I think it's important as we transition towards and cleaner energy that it's done in such a way that it doesn't become unaffordable for people. We don't force anybody into uh energy poverty as a result of bringing forward this transition, but I'm happy to support your motion.
Thank you very much. And I think we've we've been quite clear in the motion about how we have to make sure that this is good for everybody in terms of outcomes. And finally, I'd like to bring in councillor Flynn.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Uh I think firstly, I'd like to thank the deputations. I think they were excellent and uh thank you for asking them to the questions. It was really welcome. And also like to uh follow on from others and just thank all the leaders from all the groups. I think it's really important that we see a cross-party agreement on such an important topic as basically the transition to net zero. And fairness is obviously high on the the agenda here. And I think it's really important that the detail within your motion is recognised and right into the the correct people to make sure we can continue with this. I think locally within the city, we're doing well and obviously not doing well enough in some respects, but we've got to do even better. And I think the climate work on the Climate Action Plan we've put on there, the Climate Action Group, the Sustainable Dundee, for example. I think it's all good work we're doing within the city, but we need to do more and we all accept the fact we need to do more. And we will do more going forward as best we can. But again, I think it's important that we get the leadership from governments, the funding from governments. And I think that's the important part of this. So thanks very much to everybody contributed and to all the leaders for their uh collegiate approach to making sure that we actually agree to this.
Thank you. So can I take it that people are happy to support the motion? And again, thank you very much for coming and keeping on our case. And we need people to keep putting pressure on to make sure that we deliver on this very challenging agenda. So much appreciated. Okay. Now, um you're welcome to stay for the next item and the rest of the meeting. There's one more item on climate, environment and biodiversity, but you're also happy, you know, welcome to go home if you'd like to and not sit up there in the cold. So we'll we'll go on to our next item now.
Item three, net zero transition plans progress twenty twenty four. This report is for noting.
Okay, so I'll just go through this one item quite quickly. Um this report is basically a one-year-on report on our net zero transition plan. It provides updates for noting. Um it basically points out that a net zero transition plan officer has been appointed for every service area in the council. And the officer group met for the first time on the twenty sixth of November. Um it reports that on our scope one and two emissions through both our direct consumption of gas, diesel, oil and electricity within our own estate buildings as well as our scope three emissions in business travel and waste disposal. And it covers the period from April twenty three to March twenty four. And perhaps unsurprisingly, but absolutely disappointingly, um you will see that our CO2 equivalent emissions have increased over that period by zero point zero two percent. Um and that is down to the fact that post-COVID, we have reopened all our sport facilities, our leisure recreation facilities. And we've also increased occupancy in our offices. Um we've also increased consumption of electricity in running the E heat. Um the electricity emissions, um the electricity emissions reduced in the, eh have reduced because of the decarbonisation of the grid. But our emissions from nat- natural gas increased by eight percent. And the four largest areas were the Caird Hall, Dundee House, Olympia and Dundee Ice Arena. And we know that the increase in Dundee House was around seventy eight percent. But the very good thing about this report is although it doesn't make comfortable reading, it absolutely identifies where the problems are and what we have to do to tackle them. So if we weren't measuring this and reporting on it, we wouldn't be able to take the action that we need to take going forward. And so the report is submitted for noting progress and emitting the executive director of city development to explore funding areas. All of you will be aware that there was a four point nine billion commitment in the recent budget um towards climate change and it's for local authorities to make sure that we are applying for that funding and getting funding to do the work that we know we need to do. So I'm happy to open up for questions. I could see that councillor Duncan has a question.
Uh yeah, uh thanks, convener. You've actually touched on what I was going to ask about the, you you know, on page seven. Uh the report helpfully identifies the four largest emitters of uh gas uh emissions. Uh Dundee House obviously being the chief one, as you've pointed out. And um really, my question is around about the the last sentence says a key intervention, I I quote, a key intervention would be to decarbonise the heating systems of buildings. Uh can I just ask for qualification? Is that an aspiration or is it that's something that's actually been proactively worked on?
My initial response to that is we are very actively working on ways um to look at district heating and decarbonised sources, but I'm happy to bring in Robin Presswood to answer in more detail.
And in 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 terms of the the top four, you review them as and when we are considering investment in heating systems. I think we're very conscious that those um four buildings have the um the vast proportion of our our emissions or a significant portion of our emissions. Um I think one of the other factors perhaps we don't mention in the report uh is that we are now sharing Dundee House, two floors of Dundee House are leased out to others. So although the the emissions are reported here, um there's an overall reduction because there will be other savings for other organisations elsewhere in the city. And could I introduce uh Barbara Whiting, who's in charge of um decarbonisation uh and um overall uh energy uh matters, not not delivery of energy, but energy strategy, as it were, uh whose team have been responsible for writing the report? Maybe I should say a few words?
Thank you, Mr Presswood. Um yeah. Jeez, um. Yeah, I I would say that um in terms of decarbonising heating in buildings, we we have a strategy now. We have our local heat and energy efficiency strategy and delivery plan, which is kind of setting out our long-term strategy for decarbonising heat in buildings in the city. Um and we're also now exploring um in a very serious way uh the feasibility of district heat and the top three emitters would be within scope for our prioritised heat network zone in the city centre, which is the most densely populated um heat network and identified as part of our L heats. So there is work ongoing um to look at these top emitters and to address decarbonisation of heat within those buildings. Hope that helps.
Councillor Duncan, are you happy with that response?
Uh that's that's helpful because I think it kind of harks back to the previous item as well that, you know, it's important that the council, apart from, forgive the phrase, talking warm words. Um you know, we we actually have to be seen for practical and realistic to actually take something of a lead uh before we can expect others to to follow. So thanks for that.
Good. And the next question is from councillor Flynn. Comment?
Yeah, thanks, convener. I think it's a very welcome report. It's actually quite realistic, as you said at the beginning. It's true to its nature that we're not doing so well in certain areas and there is an increase. However, when I look at the action plan at the end, I think there's something for myself missing from this as in a progress bar with regards to each of the actions. Some of them have actually already been completed. For example, uh the council's paywork, the economic growth, I've taken a number of reports, including the sustainable transport delivery plan, which I was delighted to put forward myself. I think it's recognised we've done this, but I think we've got to see more challenges in here, but also progress on what's been proposed rather than just a preamble in some respects. I think it'd be useful to have maybe a rag rating or bar in the future, just for reference, if that's okay, and just maybe taken on board.
So am I happy to do that, Chair?
Okay, and then I've got Bailey Keenan. With the question.
I noticed on another part, one of our agendas is a replacement gas boiler for uh a sports centre. And and I'm wondering, given that the regional performance centre has a district heating system, whether there is any consideration given to linking that to the district heating system that's there so that that is better utilised.
Sir, please speak.
Chair, I confirm that that all options around sustainable heating will have been considered uh as part of the reinvestment proposal. Uh what we tend to find out is is that the cost of installing district heating system out with the very tight city centre boundaries that uh Mrs Whiting uh has talked about tend not to be viable. I think we've done three or four studies looking at district heating um to consider whether or not they're viable for a range of activities and they've proved not to be. In terms of single building uh renewable energy sources, we've not yet identified one um that is viable for large volume uh um areas such as leisure centres. I'm not sure if there's anything you'd like to add, or indeed, Mr Martin, in terms of the the item that we're going to discuss later. No, but Neil, anything you'd like to to cover? So we can pick that up under the next item.
Yeah, and that was a question that I also had. And so again, it's about saying it's great to have all these aspirations and targets, but we've actually got to do the work on the ground to make sure that we don't take the easiest option every time. So that that report was for noting and remitting action to um Mr Presswood to undertake and and essentially try and get funding for a lot of this work to be undertaken. Are people happy to note the report? Okay, that's the close of the meeting. Jimmy, sorry. Sorry, Jimmy. Councillor Black.
I was glad that councillor Keenan brought up the the issue of the gas boilers. It's something I asked a question about myself and asked what the working life of the boilers would be. And I believe it's twenty to twenty-five years. So at some point, we're going to have to be faced with the decision to take out boilers, which are probably in good working order um to replace them with something else, which makes me wonder why we didn't look for this something else in the first place. Um at least, I think when we get a report saying that we're going to do something like put in gas boilers, uh we should have some explanation of why we didn't go for a renewable option. And why we didn't apply for government funds or any kind of exceptional funds to finance a renewable project. Um why we didn't consider, for example, linking it up with um Morgan Academy and some of the medical facilities that are nearby. Uh you know, it's important, I think, that from now on that we are seen to have done our best. And sometimes, a bit like the council houses, we will have to come to a conclusion that the only practical or pragmatic possibility is to put in gas boilers. But we should do or damn this not to if we can possibly manage it. So um I was disappointed that the report didn't explain why we hadn't gone for another option. And of course, I was kind of waiting till the next committee, till the next report to bring this up. But since councillor Keenan brought it in and since we've been talking about global justice and a just incision, it seemed like an appropriate time to raise it. So thank you, convener.
Thank you. I completely agree with your comments. It doesn't really specifically to this report, but it is the next report. So I think it's a request from the councillors to say when we're making decisions, we need a very clear explanation about why we're not doing the renewable option.
Chair, I couldn't um agree more. Uh I'm sure we'd be happy to provide an analysis of the decision in this case to introduce a gas boiler. I suspect the answer, as always, is it is it's cost, it's simply more costly to run alternatives if indeed they are suitable for the buildings. But I'm sure Mr Martin would be happy to send out a note to all elected members just summarising the thought process.
That would be greatly appreciated if Mr Martin could do. That would be greatly appreciated if Mr Martin could do that. That is the end of my committee. And just to say to the people in the balcony, if you would like to leave, you're free to go. You don't have to stay there all night and listen to us, but thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much. Right.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year from me, and welcome to the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee. Can I have the first item, please, Alan? Veronica, sorry?
Thank you. Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
I see a declaration from councillor Craig.
Thank you, Convenor. I wish to declare a non-financial interest in one aspect only for item three. And the tender in relation to the Green Transport Hub, a close family member had involvement with this project, so I will not take part or vote on that tender, but it obviously doesn't affect on any other aspect of item three.
Very good work, councillor Craig. That's much appreciated. I don't see any other declaration of interest. We'll move on, please.
Item two, sourcing strategies by the head of design and property. This report is for approval.
So this item seeks approval of three sourcing strategies to commence with the procurement of each work stream. The strategies contained in the report comprise St Peter and Paul's internal fire replacement, upgrade of Blackness Primary School grounds for toilets and heating boiler and controls replacement at Dundee International Sports Centre, as we previously heard. I believe councillor Craig, you have the first question?
Thank you, Convenor. It's actually a comment and a question, if I may. My comment is just to welcome the tender and refurbishment of the toilets at Blackness Primary School. Myself and Bailey McPherson have raised the conditions of the toilets on numerous occasions and the flood damage, et cetera. So obviously, this is very much welcomed. Just a question regards to the timing. Obviously, it's great that it's scheduled to be done during the school holidays, and that obviously is common sense, and we back that, obviously due to the kids not being in. But due to a lot of projects, especially along the other school estates in the city, how feasible is this? And are people confident that it will get done during the holidays, just because we don't want a period of time come back after the holidays, August, September time, that this is not done? So just wondering if the timescales are feasible.
Thank you, councillor Craig. I didn't quite hear everything you said there about, I gathered, but the timescales and the feasibility of it. So I'll bring in Mr Martin to answer that.
Thank you, Convenor. Thanks for the question, councillor Craig. Yes, I can confirm that the timescales are realistic in terms of the scope of work and obviously bringing this for approval this evening allows the contractor adequate time for planning and ordering of the materials and manufacturing of components to be on site for the start of school holidays.
Great, thank you. Does that answer your question, councillor Craig?
Yep, good. Appreciate that, Mr Martin. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to repeat the request made earlier about an explanation about the gas boilers in the international sports centre, but I also wanted to ask for some more information around the sourcing strategies generally, and what steps are taken to ensure that we are doing community wealth building and making it easy for local businesses and supported employment businesses to tender for this work.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. And I'm sure as we've already given to Mr Presswood that the note will go out. I'll bring in Mr Martin just to talk about community wealth building aspect.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks for the question, councillor Anderson. So in terms of community wealth, we're always looking for maximising the opportunity to use the infrastructure that we've got in the city, and particularly with all construction, because we do have a very skilled workforce. And that is the first port of contact that we will use over a variety of trades. And in terms of how we'll go about that, obviously, we've got the constraints of public procurement compliance, and we'll work within those constraints to maximise how we'll go about that and ensure we give every opportunity to the locals. And obviously, you're aware, we'll work very closely with corporate colleagues, particularly in terms of community wealth and how we'll manage to maximise that. So we're always looking for different ways on each and every contract to see how we can utilise the local supply chain.
Thank you.
But we have to declare an interest to someone who's a director of Dovetail Enterprises. So it was around the issue of supported employment agencies as well, to make sure that they get an opportunity.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. Apologies for putting my mic back on there. I don't see any further questions on this item, so can this be agreed? Thank you. Next item, please, Veronica.
Item three, tenders received by head of design and property. This item is for your approval.
So this item is seeking approval to accept a total of four tenders with combined expenditure of 12.6 million for construction and infrastructure work across the city. These tenders include refurbishment works to Rockwell Schoolhouse, inspection and testing of lighting controls for the V and A and the regional performance centre, Bell Street Green Transport Hub main contract works and upgrade and maintenance of parking meters. Bailey McPherson, I believe you've got the first question?
Thanks, indeed, Convenor. My question's regarding the upgrade and maintenance of parking meters. And I very much welcome this report and indeed the other tenders before us in this item. My question's really about if the work to upgrade parking meters applies to all parking meters or just those that are, how shall we put it, perhaps a little more elderly than others? And I was just really wondering if we could have some indication as to the extent of the works in relation to the totality of our parking meters. And I ask for a very specific reason. And the start and completion dates are over four years, February 25 to February 29. I have an ongoing issue over some time of parking meters that sometimes work and sometimes don't. A particular part of my ward, I'm not going to say exactly where it is, but the officers do know where that is. And I was just really wondering if the work is, in terms of upgrading the parking meters, is going to be done in such a way that those where there have been specific problems are done first, frankly?
Thanks very much for the question, Bailey McPherson. I'm sure all of us have got our own specific bugbears, specific parking meters or points that we've got concerns about. I know that I do, particularly in the city centre. But I'll bring in Mr McNorton for a bit more detail on that. Mr McNorton?
Yes, thank you, Convenor. Thank you for the question, Bailey McPherson. The works do cover 125 of the council's parking meters. The upgrade works will be undertaken in the first quarter of the contract with the costs spread out over the five years, but all works will be completed in year one. It is a fairly rapid deployment programme, so it will be an operational delivery programme rather than a needs-based, because it's expected to be completed within the first three months of the contract commencing. The works will affect changing over the connectivity from 2G to 4G on the meters, also the control panels, some of the inner workings of the system as well, and installing new payment methods, so new coin and cash collection methods and card on all of the 125 metres.
Thanks for that very full answer, Mr McNorton. I hope that answers all your questions, Bailey McPherson?
It does indeed, Convenor, and it's very reassuring in relation to the timeframe in which these upgrades will take place. So grateful to Mr McNorton. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think the fairness issue that Mr McNorton and indeed councillor Tolland have already raised in the past is really crucial, that we keep that parity in terms of being able to pay with different methods, and it's something that I was very keen to see that we do. So I'm glad that we are doing that. Councillor Flynn, have you got the next question?
Yes, thanks, Convenor. I think I welcome the Green Transport Hub and Spokesworks project here. I think it's really important. I was at the time, as you know, when this came through, the UK Government level up funding, the vast majority of that costs of this work is coming from the UK Government. And I think that having seen, what we've been talking about earlier this evening, we're seeing EV chargers, we're seeing PV arrays and battery storage, cycle storage being used in the unreused centre, but a whole transformational project for this area as a whole. My only concern here, Convenor, is that when we look on what we're seeing on the social media, for example, nobody seems to know what's happening here. And I think that's my biggest concern. It's a fantastic project, but we don't seem to be advertising it enough to let people outside this room understand what's actually happening. So my request to officers, and I've done this over a number of months now, is to make sure we see some advertising on the fencing, for example, or the hoardings around the site itself. I managed to see the contractor signs there quite clearly. And if you want to take some example, go down to see what's happening at the student accommodation in Blackness and see the advertising they're doing there. Because I think it's important, when we do projects like this, which are for the environment primarily, but transformational in the sense of taking away a car park and transforming it into a new hub, that we should be showing the people of the city and who visit the city what we're actually doing. So my request to officers is to make sure this is done as soon as possible and not just have these small pictures, for example, being put up, which are really quite ineffective. And let the people of the city, as I said, visitors, see what we're doing within the city, promote what we're doing within the city, and show where the funding is coming from as well. Because it's important we actually understand where the funding comes from, because everybody seems to think we're spending the money from the council budget, when in fact we're not. We're being supported by Transport Scotland, for example, here, and the UK Government. And I think it's important we recognise it.
Thanks for your comments, councillor Flynn. I totally agree with what you're saying. And I do know that this is in process, and what I would like to see is some boardings very much similar to what we've got in Site Six, with useful information and very clear signings there. But as I say, I'll pass it over to Mr McNorton to respond to that, but I believe that is in hand.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Thank you, councillor Flynn. I can confirm that is in hand and will be completed imminently.
So can I go back on that, if it's okay? Mr McNorton, can I get some timescales to this, please? Because I think it's, again, I've been asking for this for a number of months, and I think it just, a timescale would be helpful.
Yeah, confirm that'll be done this month.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr McNorton. Bailey Scott, you've got the next question?
It's just following on from what councillor Flynn said, and it's more of an observationary about how bizarre local government funding sometimes appears when we're agreeing tonight to spend £12 million on the Green Transport Hub, which I agree is going to be a transformational project, and it's nice to have on the city governance agenda. We're talking about a £10 million revenue budget deficit and consulting on closing school swimming pools and sports centres and libraries and community centres and museums. And I don't know what I would rather have, so it must, to the average person in the street, must seem quite strange that we've got £30 million to spend on this project, but we need to find £10 million of savings in the revenue budget. And I appreciate that it's different budgets and it's different funding streams, but sometimes it just looks a bit strange.
Thank you, Bailey Scott. I think, as councillor Flynn made the same point, I think it's important that we note that the Bell Street project is coming from non-recurring funding, whereas, as you yourself highlight, this is a revenue gap that needs to be met. So I totally understand how this can look to the public. It's a very difficult thing to grasp, even when you're exposed to day in and day out. But the fact is, it complicates now that it is, we're talking about non-recurring funding versus recurring funding. And I do think that people struggle with that difference, frankly, when you just pick up something from a headline, it's that difficulty of conveying a message and having the time to read it in our busy lifestyles. But I don't see any further questions, so can this be agreed? Thank you very much. We'll move to the last item on the agenda then, please, Veronica.
Thank you. The following item is confidential. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual way?
Can this be dealt with in the usual manner? I'll take that as a yes. Thank you very much. That's the business of the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee.
Good evening, everyone. And happy New Year to everyone I've not seen so far this evening. I'll pass over to Willie, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? Non-financial in relation to leisure and culture Dundee. Can't type fast enough. Apologies.
Thanks, Bailey Dawson. I think that's noted, and similar with anyone else on LNC. Okay, Willie, over to you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Take you on to item two, Chief Executive Service Plan, with your progress report. You asked to give the recommendations.
As if you have the update on the service plan, and it's just here for the content for noting. Any comments or questions? Councillor Duncan, please.
Just a very quick comment, well, question. We, I note the progress has been made in the uptake of the under 22 NEC bus travel is now by 8 to 8%. My question really was just, what's the comparable figures with the over 60 bus travel?
Definitely.
Thank you. And thank you, councillor Duncan. And the over 60s is in the 90s, but I can't remember the exact figure, so I'll double check that and get back to you.
No worries. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Councillor McKay, please.
Thank you. Under fairness on page five of the report, we're told that the neighbourhood capital fund will allocate £308,000 budget for 2024 across six wards. I'm assuming this means that there's been no allocation from this fund so far for 24/25? If someone confirms that's correct. And will any unspent funding roll over to 25/26 in addition to any 25/26 funding?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Andrea, please.
So we can confirm the funding hasn't been spent this year. There's a new process that was agreed at committee, and we'll double check about any carry forward. Come back to you.
Answer your question? Yeah, thank you. I think I see no further questions or comments, so we'll take that report as agreed. Thank you, Willie, please.
Yeah, thank you. Take you on to item three, neighbourhood services service plan. This is for noting.
Again, this report's just providing update on the progress made in the last six months, or six months to February 10th, on the neighbourhood services plan, and it's for noting. I see councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr Convenor. I'm happy to get yourself in the chamber. Firstly, on page 35 of the substantive page numbering, the percentage of reactive repairs within timescales is still well short of the 93% target for this fragile year. And secondly, again, the average time to take it to complete non-emergency repairs is still well short of the target and appears to have worsened, judging by the statistics on page 15. Can I ask officers what is being done and if they have any confidence that the targets will be met by the 31st of March?
Thank you for your question. Councillor Coleman, I'll pass over to Mr Boyle, please.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, councillor Coleman. Yeah, as we've previously reported to committee, we're looking at the housing repair and recovery plan as a priority. And in terms of the reactive repairs, that's something we're actively working on at the moment. I can give an assurance that this has become an emerging priority, and we'll continue to work away at that and report to committee in due course.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Daniel?
Yes, thank you. I look forward to your take.
Okay, thank you very much. And I see no further questions or comments, so we'll take that report as agreed. Thank you. Thanks, Willie, please.
Yeah, thank you. Take you on to item four, Leisure and Culture Dundee Performance and Impact Report. This is for noting.
Again, just another report from Leisure and Culture Performance and Impact Report, and it's for noting. Councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, Convenor. Just with regard to page 50, I was encouraged to see the optic, the welcome optic in attendance numbers at Thoy Ferry Castle Museum has gone up by 10% between 2022/23 and 2023/24. Obviously, this is something of a hot topic at the moment. My views are no secret, there are a lot of potential ways forward, I think, in securing a good and, I would think, upgraded future for this much valued facility. And given that, you know, numbers seem to be heading in the right direction, it's really just a plea that... And given that, you know, numbers seem to be heading in the right direction, it's really just a plea that, you know, sufficient time is given, you know, to allow some of these good ideas to actually be put into action and monitored. So that, my plea there is just that we don't, as a council, come to any hasty decision about the castle museum, which we might all regret.
Yeah, thanks for your comments. I think from the previous committee, we've actually discussed this and it will come to, I think, far and close, correctly, February, end of February committee, possibly, or March. But I'll bring in Mr Colgan in the first instance.
Thanks, convener, and thanks councillor Duncan for the question. Just to confirm, officers are working to what was agreed at committee, which is to engage with relevant agencies and report no later than February 2025.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, pig?
It kind of does, convener, and chief executive. But I mean, again, I reiterate my plea that nothing should be decided quickly. You know, a lot of things, it's a bit like trying to turn an oil tanker round at sea. A lot of these good ideas, plans, schemes, et cetera, that we need a year or two to actually be trialled and bedded in. So that's, you know, my plea is, you know, that nothing precipitate is decided upon with haste.
I think as the chief executive said, we'll have another opportunity in February to discuss any proposal I've put forward and following up from any dialogue that's gone on with the parties I'm meant to be contacting. So thank you very much. Bailey Scott, please.
Want to ask a question about the volunteer figures on page 50 and what's behind the big increase in volunteers and the big increase in the hours as well. Are they covering gaps caused by non-filling of posts in leisure culture Dundee? And while I have the floor, I'd also make the point under attendance indicators, the Douglas Sports Centre had the second biggest increase of any other facilities, with over a third increasing on the previous year, yet we're thinking about closing it, go figure, eh?
So if I consider, everything is up for consideration as is put forward in the budget proposals by officers. And I think, and to answer your question, I'll bring in Judy in first.
Thank you for the question, Bailey Scott. The figure for volunteering does not reflect any suggestion at all that any work is covered by volunteers. We have very specific volunteering opportunities across all the service areas and they enhance the work that's done and bring quality of life for the volunteers as well as better experiences for the customers.
Okay, is that your question? Yeah, thanks very much. See no further questions or comments, so we'll take that report as agreed. Again, Willie, please.
I'll take Sean to the meeting item 5, both government finance settlement, financial implications for the second council. We're asked to give the recommendations.
So just take it straight to any questions or comments. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks very much, convener. Can I first of all start with a thank you to officers? Because our group had raised a request that the budget meeting took place at two rather than three o'clock. And it's all around weekly surgeries on a Thursday. And I'm very grateful to officers for the fact that that has actually now happened. My question's about the information in three point, sorry, 5.3, in relation to the national insurance, employers' national insurance contributions increase. The report reads the total funding that will be made available to support this has not been determined and will be announced and distributed in due course. Then goes on to say that, and some assumptions have been made in order to give the projected budget deficit outlined in paragraph 3.1. I was just really wondering if officers could indicate, first of all, how confident are they about the assumptions that they have made? Because quite frankly, the amounts here are significant in relation to the budget deficit. And secondly, do they have an indication as to when in due course is likely to be? Has there been any indication from government centrally as to when we will have certainty in relation to that issue?
Thank you for that. Pass over to Robert, please.
Thank you, convener. So the assumption that we've made in the planning and in the figures here is that the money that the UK government has made available for Scotland will be distributed for national insurance in the public sector in Scotland. And that funding is estimated to be around about 60% of what the cost has been set out to be. So the cost is understood to be in the region of £300 million for, sorry, the funding is estimated around £300 million. The cost is around about £500 million. So we're expecting, we've expected and we've made an assumption that about 60% of that will be passed on. There's no confirmation that will be done and that will remain a risk. However, if we look back to this year, the additional money that was provided to the Scottish government by the UK government for the increase in teachers' pensions and contributions was passed on. So if the same process is followed, then we can reasonably anticipate that the money that Scotland gets available for national insurance costs will be made available to public bodies who need it in Scotland. However, that funding won't be enough to cover the national insurance cost in Scotland. And that's partly, I think, because this public sector in Scotland makes up a higher proportion of the cost base compared with the rest of the UK. So to answer your question, Bailey McPherson, we've made the best estimate we can of what funding we think will be made available. The Scottish government does not provide additional funding within its budget for that shortfall. And therefore, we've assumed that we will have to find that one from within our budget. You'll note the reports indicates that there may yet be changes to the Scottish budget before it's concluded. And obviously, we'll keep members abreast of that if that's the case when we come to the final budget discussions later this year.
Thanks, girls.
So that's difficult to say. Apologies, convener. We didn't find out about the actual, exact funding for the teachers' share of funding until the autumn. So it could be some time before we know what that position is. What I would hope is that we get an indication from the Scottish government that they will pass that money on. And that's an indication that we got much earlier than that for the teachers' pensions. And certainly something that Cosler and colleagues are pressing for from the Scottish government.
Thanks very much. Has that answered your question, Bailey McPherson?
It does, insofar as, you know, and I understand the position officers are in. So I'm very grateful to Mr Eamonn for his response. I would just make the point that compensating the public sector in Scotland to only 60% of the employer national insurance increase is really quite disappointing, because that has an impact on services, not just for local government, but across the public sector. And I think that is indeed very disappointing. Yeah, thank you, convener.
Yeah, thank you. I absolutely agree with you. I think the decision for employers' national insurance was taken badly. I think it hasn't been thought about correctly by the government down in Westminster. And I think the implications in this council alone could be quite devastating if it's not fully mitigated, notwithstanding the charities and doctor surgeries, for example, who are going to be penalised as well with regards to this crazy rise. Bailey Scott, please.
It's okay, convener. You've said what I wanted to say on employers' national insurance contributions. Thanks.
Thank you for that. And I see no further questions or comments, so we'll take that as agreed. And that's the business of the season. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a good night.